Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hiram. Next we have a presentation from the City of West Jordan Youth Theater Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for having us here today. Presentation, I'm not going to do a show. But I just want to give you a quick update on the youth theater. We are, first of all, thank you to the city for a quick response on our current facility and trying to get the air a little bit cooler there. We appreciate that and also are super excited for a new facility. We are currently mid-production of Fiddler on the Roof and we will have shows this October at Joel P. Jensen. And starting, or on September 15th, we also are doing a talent show fundraiser at Pioneer Hall. And coming a little bit later in the year, we're going to have a winter ball dance also at Pioneer Hall later this year. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move-
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. If I may, real quick, Becca, I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and giving the brief update. We don't hear, we talk frequently about the youth theater. We're making strides to help support in additional capacity, so it's really nice to have somebody who can come out and give us a quick update. So, thank you very much for being willing to come out and do that.
You're welcome. We're trying to do better, so we'll be around.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move to communications. Russ, do you have anything tonight?
There. How's that? Sorry. I just wanted to say that we're looking at doing some restructuring in our Economic Development Department to use our employees more efficiently and to get them the resources they need to go out and bring some more businesses in. So, if you have any questions on that, I hope to have a diagram and a plan, strategic plan for your next meeting, or at least by the first meeting in September, so that you know exactly what our plan is to do and what resources we'll need to do that.
Thank you. Paul, do you have anything this evening? Scott? Nothing tonight. Thank you. Brian?
Just one item, Mayor, just a point of clarification on Item 6H, on consent. There was a typo on the date. It states August 23rd, which is today. The event actually takes place on October 7th, so it's correct on the resolution, just on the council report. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Piper? Nothing tonight, Mayor. Wendell?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief MacLeary?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Chief Shepherd?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a couple things. So, Councilmember McConaughey and I met with some residents last night on, over at 90 South, just to talk about some future land use and some road issues, and I just wanted to publicly state that we were there. The other option, or the other comment I had, is maybe for Russ Wall, but we had talked about different things with, as commented tonight, with the cooling system at the old library and some issues with City Hall, and we've talked about the animal shelter, but do we, are we doing things that are helping us to maintain this equipment throughout the city or have a plan in place?
Typically, you would have a sync fund that would allow you to do major repairs without having to open the budget and take it out of your reserve. We don't have that. There's some money for maintenance, but when you have a building like this and the buildings that we have, you know, a roof's going to last 20 years, an AC system's going to last 15 years, so we should be putting aside 1/20th for a roof on all our buildings and 1/15th for air conditioning systems, and we're not even close to doing that. That stuff we'll probably need to talk about during your budget session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the last thing I just wanted to bring to the council's attention is I met this morning with a company called Go Rail. They're an association, and it was with Mayor Rolf and myself and with Mr. Bricky, and they're looking at, and I just want to find out what the council's feelings are, but the Surface Transportation Board is looking to introduce some new regulations on freight railroads, and the reason they came to us and other cities that have businesses that are serviced by rail is that we want to try and keep the freight off of roads and keep it on the rails. And so they're looking for a letter of support that they've drafted along with other cities to talk about not increasing any more regulation. One of the statistics that they gave is that one of the worldwide shipping companies that spend about a billion dollars said if this were to pass, it would inhibit their ability to efficiently move their goods, and they would take it off the rails and put a billion dollars' worth of shipping costs onto roads. And so, I don't know if there's, if you want me to send a sample letter over to you or if there would be an interest in that from the city, but that was just something I met with them today.
Is anyone on the council against preventing more regulation, stiffer, more costs associated with?
And this would have impact with our businesses like SME Steel, Interstate Brick, and some of the businesses in our city that are serviced by rail.
Councilmember Nichols?
Just a comment, not necessarily imposing what's going on here. I'm just thinking in the bigger picture. I'm thinking more of like, we've had instances specifically in our city where we wish there was better regulation, specifically on rail, and I just want to make sure we're not cutting ourselves off from those possibilities. I mean, we specifically have looked at the rail yard out there and trying to limit the times in which those trains are going by specifically. I just want to make sure that we're not hurting ourselves by supporting something like this. So anyway, that's just a thought.
We did bring that up this morning with-
Yeah. And I think this is a little bit different. This is moving goods interstate. So SME shipping steel out of West Jordan to another state, another city, it wouldn't really affect what's happening within this, our city with specifically the rail yard. But if anybody, if no one has any concerns, then I can forward this to each of you. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick shout-out to our Parks Department. A few weeks ago, actually, gosh, it was just before the 4th of July, so a month and a half ago, the Parks Department met with a group of residents up in the Sycamores with myself, I was there as well, and they had a concern with a trail that runs behind some houses up there in that Sycamores Park. We call it a park, the goalie, the open space up there. And that was, there was some concern with some trees that were in a ravine that made this nice little kind of a hiding place for nefarious activity, and there was this path that was actually being driven on by cars by these people doing this nefarious activity. And so, talked to the Parks Department, they brought out with the urban forester and they raised the canopy on those trees so the hiding place is gone, and they put bollards up. I noticed those were installed this last week or so, bollards up on that path so you couldn't drive on it anymore. So just great responsiveness and good work for Parks Department. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Gratefully, I was not up for election this year, and I've proudly for two years said I was not going to run again, so it has nothing to do with not, just basically it was just that sense of, hey, after eight years, I'm done. That's good. It has nothing against the fact that being in elected office hasn't been pleasant. But I bring this up specifically that I had absolutely nothing in this fight, but regardless of that, I wanted to make a public statement and thank every single one of those people who put their name on a ballot this year. To put your name on a ballot, it takes courage. Some people may disagree, because as soon as you put your name on a ballot, instantly there will be someone who will speak bad of you. That's just what happens. That's what happens in politics. They'll say, well, this is what I don't like, and this is what I do like, and that's just what happens. And it happened to me for the first time eight years ago, and I put my name on a ballot, it immediately happened. And that's just what happens, it's part of politics. So thank you, genuinely, to everyone who put their name on a ballot. Takes a lot of courage. There are some who are not moving forward, although it's not official yet, we do that next week, the results, there will be some who will not be moving forward to the general. So I wish those who don't make it through the best, and those who do, we wish them the best as well, as they continue on towards the general election. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rolf and I were at the Western Growth Coalition meeting on Monday, and the emphasis was on transportation. A member of UDOT was there and indicated that the next section of Mountain View Corridor would be open in November, and that's from 54 South North to wherever they're at.
4100.
4100, thank you. And so that'll be good. Also, the overpasses on Bangader are underway, as most of us know, and the idea is that eventually, all those crossings on Bangader will be overpasses, and so we'll be able to go all the way from 21 South down to Utah County without stopping. That'd be great. So, don't hold your breath, though, that's going to take a while. And then Senator Wayne Harper was there, and he's on the Transportation Task Force, and Wayne is a good representative for West Jordan and is working for us and helping us, so we need to support him as much as we can in that. That's all.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 5th, that's a Tuesday evening at 7 o'clock, I will be holding a town hall meeting. If you are interested in having me add something onto that agenda, please contact me, and I will consider doing so. I will be creating, putting an agenda together. I don't have one yet, so you still have time to contribute. Otherwise, feel free to come join us. That'll be a District 2 Town Hall meeting, Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I wish I could just verbatim repeat what Councilmember Nichols said. I'll add a couple comments to that about the folks who were willing to jump up and put your name on a ballot. Thank you so much for getting involved. It takes a lot to go through and do that. You really learn a lot about the city, and despite agreements or disagreements, I feel like there's a natural kinship with the folks who have been willing to try and get out there. I've met most of you, well, some of those who ran for the first time through the election, and it's always inspiring to see the love that people have for the city, regardless of their thoughts for how we can improve, how places where we might be needing to do a little bit better. It's really inspirational to see how many people care so deeply for the city and are willing to give their own time. Oftentimes, there's a cash expense out of their own pocket that directly impacts their families, and to go and put yourself in a position where people are going to, you're only going to hear from the people who are frustrated with you, it's an admirable thing to do. So thank you for putting the community first and offering your services to the community, and thank you for the friendship and the conversations that you've shared with me. I very much appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just had one thing, I'm happy to announce that Smith &amp; Edwards is open. The ribbon cutting for Smith &amp; Edwards, and I'd like as many council members there, we're inviting all the representatives from this area, senators and reps, to come as well. It is on September 8th at 5:00 PM, the ribbon cutting. All the managers and the Smith family will be there. And then the grand opening is, of course, on the 9th. I expect they'll have a lot going on on that day, and those that have been there and shopped there say this is a fabulous store, so I really look forward to them and our community. We worked hard to get them here, everyone on this dais did, and I'm tickled to death to say they're finally open. We'll move now to citizens' comments. I have three signed up to speak. Al Richards?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Al Richards, 7103 South Redwood Road. I'm here on behalf of Best Buddies. For those of you that do not know what Best Buddies is, this organization has been around since 1989. Anthony K. Schreiber is the one who actually started it. We are planning our first annual Buddy Friendship Walk, and with me being a part of this organization and growing up here in West Jordan, I really pushed with our National Director to have the Buddy Walk here in West Jordan. So what we do is we work with individuals with ADD, which is Intellectual Development and Disabilities, and we pair them up with somebody from one of our school chapters, which is either a junior high, high school, or a college, where these kids, it's kind of like a big brother type thing. So I'm here to ask for the city's support. I'd love to have West Jordan be there to support Best Buddies. I think it's really good to get the word out. A lot of the people that I speak to, they have no clue, they've never heard of Best Buddies, and the ones that I do speak to are actually very, very interested in coming out and participating. So I think it would be a great thing for the city. I'd love to invite the city to sign up a team, have whoever can make it. It's on October 7th, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial. So if you guys would support us, we would greatly appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Stephen Jones?
Mayor, council, appreciate you being here today. Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South. A few months back, there was a proposal, I think, some financial stuff, talking about the beautification of out front of the town hall here. And so many times, when presentations have been done here, we have comparisons to other cities and what's going on there. And so at this time, I'd like to just remind the council, and I'm all for beautification, I mean, don't get me wrong, but I am very much against putting an island down the middle of Redwood Road. And I want you right now to go to South Jordan and drive down 106 South, and you can roughly see about $500,000' worth of tearing out that's being done, just about the time trees got to be nice, just about the time all the plants in the middle were starting to look pretty cotton-picking good. Guess what? They're ripping it all out now. And I think inevitably that's what happens because of the way that our roads are designed and the way that transportation is growing. So I would counsel the council is to go ahead and beautify our city, beautify and put trees down the side because they have a much more tendency to be permanent. With the stuff down the middle of the road, forget it. It's a waste of my taxpayer money for very short, I mean, that's probably only been in 15 years. And so, just think about that before you start chucking some of these dollars out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Eupremo?
Mayor and council, I just want to say, this primary election absolutely taught us a lot. The female candidate for the council at large never put up one sign. I didn't see one sign, no male or anything, yet. That female candidate got 3,300 votes. So that just tells you, when she was on the candidate night, she wants to lower the salary for the mayor, and, which I'm a million percent against, our mayor works very, very hard. And I'm against this female person because she lost the election of Jordan School District. So the reason she got 3,300 votes was not because of the Jordan School District, believe me. It was because the women in West Jordan want a woman on our city council. That's the only reason. And because she's a female, not, she got more votes than anybody that ran for the thing, and I'm a million percent against her. But I'm also against candidates running and putting campaign signs up where they're not supposed to be. Riding has put up campaign signs on UDOT property. UDOT does not allow campaign signs, and that's in front of Jordan Hospital. Also, Riding put up campaign signs on West Jordan property, took five days for code enforcement to tell Riding to put down those signs. Utah, I mean, UTA, UTA also does not allow campaign signs. So anyway, I went ahead and I called Mr. Riding. He's not here today. I don't see him. I don't see him. I called him, I was curious. Why a man, he's running for office, why is he putting campaign signs on property that is not legal? Mr. Burton did the same thing, and thank goodness he didn't get on, but over and over again, Rocky Mountain Power, I called Mr. Riding, and I was just curious psychologically, why did you put campaign signs illegally on West Jordan property on 4000 South? And guess what, folks? He hung up on me. That, this is fake news. I got this in the mail, integrity! Is that integrity to deal with the person, to ask, why did you put campaign signs illegally on West Jordan property? And he hung up on me. So here's this man that's running for office, is that how he deals with people that...
Anyway, thank you for listening. David Bricky?
Mayor, can I just correct a couple statements and just clarify? If people are concerned about where signs are posted, we have a very clear understanding that there are no campaign signs allowed on city property. A phone call to either Ms. Briggs, who is the chief election officer in the city, or Brock Hudson, who is our code enforcement officer, will result in that sign being removed. With regard to UDOT property, that is state property, we have no authority to oversee that property, and it's my understanding UDOT has made a decision to allow signage on their property. That's their choice. If you're unhappy about it, I would suggest contacting Governor Herbert. But that is not something the city has the ability to control or regulate. Beyond that, I just wanted to make sure our record is that the city does not allow campaigning on city property.
Thank you. That's all that have signed up to speak tonight. Anyone in the public wishing to speak now would be the opportunity. As a reminder, you're allowed three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice. Please state your name and address for the record. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, distinguished council, Kevin Tominy, owner of the Countertop Factory, 4015 West, 8250 South, here in West Jordan. I've stood here and had some really negative comments, to say more than a few times, but tonight I'm here to give you some good information, good things. I'm doing an addition on my building, and in the process of it, we have been waiting for a fire sprinkler permit. It goes to a third party, so somewhere with your third party, it got stuck, and I was able to make a call as soon as your fire marshal, Paul Rockbank, got wind of it. He ran right over to my office, met with me, figured out what was going on. I got a call an hour later from your fire chief, Mark, and he told me by the end of the day he'd have an answer, four hours later. So five hours total, five hours after a phone call, I had my permit, I had messages from Mark and Paul, both stating, your permit's approved, go to work, just move forward. So, thank you. Thank you, Mark. If Paul were here, I would say thank you. I genuinely appreciate it. It's a delight to work with people that are competent and can get their job done. And can I add to that list? Loretta, in your planning department. Loretta is an absolute delight. There was a time when I was building my building a dozen years ago when I briefly considered killing everyone in your planning department, recognizing that was a bad idea, I dismissed it, but at the time it seemed like a pretty good thing to do. And Lane Western, if you could clone Lane Western and put him throughout the city, all your stock would rise exponentially. He's firm on the things that matter, he's fair on the things that don't, and he's just stone-cold practical. He knows what he's doing, and he figures out ways to get things done. So, Mark, thank you. Paul, Dave, thank you. Thank you, city. Thanks for having competent people. I appreciate it more than I can tell you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please.
Hiram Matthews, 4987 West. I just wanted to thank all the people I've been running against for the city council race. Kaylee, and she ran an incredible race, great numbers, and how it turns out on the 29th, I'm extremely thankful for this opportunity to run. If I do beat out Max Johnson, I just know we had the most honest, truthful campaign out there. Nothing but respect, and I also wanted to thank Melanie Briggs, professional with what she does, timely with information, kept me up to date on several bits of information I extremely needed. And that is about all, and thank you, council and mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close citizen's comments, and we will move to the consent calendar. I've been asked by Councilmember Newton to pull Item 6B, so that will be pulled. Anyone else? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not asking to pull this item, but 6H, which is the fee waiver for Best Buddies Friendship Walk, wholeheartedly support that. I didn't know anything about it till Al posted something on Facebook, and I started doing a little digging, so thank you for making us aware. As I'm going through the staff report, it suggests that we don't really have a funding source for this, so the various departments would end up having to fund this out of their own budgets. We had intentionally overfunded the Healthy West Jordan Committee's budget, and the intent was that they would have enough funding to do four or so, ideally 5Ks per year. We know they're planning on doing the one, so I think this could be funded out of the Healthy West Jordan budget, and I think it would be a good time with them anyway. And Mr. Richards happens to be a good connection to that committee as well. So my recommendation would be approval of this item, but rather than the $2,800 coming from the various departments, that funding come from the Healthy West Jordan budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that something we just have done within the staff? Make that change, or do we need to bring it back to our next meeting for an official? You can do that administratively as city manager, right?
We are talking about less than 20,000. In fact, I think it's 1,500 or something like that, or even less than that. So I think we can handle it administratively in, within the, without the need of the city council.
So with a motion approving this, you have that direction?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember McConaughey?
Move to approve all consent items with the exception of B as in Bravo.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. Scene on this vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes, seven in favor.
Consent Item 6B, approve an additional level to the accountant position. Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, if you could explain to us a little bit more of what you're asking for here and why, and why there is no fiscal impact to this change? Would you address that for me?
Currently, we have an accountant level at level, step 58, and a senior accountant at 74, step 74. What this proposal is, is to have an accountant II position at 66, so somewhere in between, so we can attract- so we can attract for employee recruitment, retention competitiveness with other municipalities. In the current year, we've had some vacancies in the accounting, the finance area, and this would be a slot that we possibly could fill. Someone, if they're a little more experienced, we could put them into an accountant two position, somewhere in between an accountant and a senior accountant position. Just give us more flexibility, able to compete with other cities with what they have in their levels of pay. But we've had vacancies, so there'd be no impact on the budget for the current year.
But it is a higher paid position, correct?
It would be in between a senior accountant and an entry level accountant.
So...
So we wouldn't have to slot them in. If we felt like they had more experience than an entry level person, we wouldn't need to go into the senior accountant level. We could slot them in an accountant two and save money there. Just give more flexibility as far as staffing with three different positions rather than just two. Both cities have various levels, more than just two.
Okay, all right. Thank you. David?
Thank you. I could just, can I expand on that? One of our local communities is attempting to poach our folks. We have a very capable accountant, but there is nowhere for that accountant to progress, to gain further experience with our current definitions. For example, the current accountants don't have auditing responsibilities. By creating this position, we're actually going to assign some auditing obligations to this new position. That will also allow the employee to expand their experience, becoming more likely to advance with and stay with the city. We've been without the employment of a particular senior accountant now for almost three months, and it's the hope to use that remaining salary that was his to help pay for this position. There is a very real likelihood that we already have the employee here in the city that can fill this position. This position is available in West Valley City and South Jordan, and they want our employee, and I'm trying to figure out how to hang on to him. So I actually tasked Bill with trying to come up with a basis for justifying, if this person can do this work, why we shouldn't also pay that person for doing additional Does that answer some of your concerns?
It does. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the additional background on that. Personally, I'm not ready to say yes to that tonight. I'd like to see a little bit more background from HR and understanding how we compare to other cities and the need. Frankly, when I saw the staff report, and it was just the three sentences, it sounded like we are requesting for a new position to be created that just wouldn't be funded, and then next time around with the budget, it just magically, oh, well, we are funding a position that's already been approved. We've had a few things slip through like that, and I wanted to avoid that this time. So I very much appreciate the additional clarity, but I still want to think about this and not make a decision like that, just shooting from the hip. So I would not be in favor at this time, but I would be open to listening to it, researching it, perhaps the next council meeting.
Would the council be willing to consider a motion table until a date in September? We'll get the information and share with you the impact, how it relates. One of the concerns that we were talking about when we positioned this was we wanted to be respectful of other employees where they have worked for the city for years. We would want to acknowledge their contribution without seeming to jump over the hurdle of where these other employees would have been. So we've tried to be sensitive to that. We'll explain that in the memo, or memorandum that we bring back to the council, so you have a better understanding of that position and process.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Mayor, I move to table consent item 6B until no later than the second meeting of September.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Newton. Discussion of the motion. See on this vote?
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 7A, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 17-47 regarding a future land use amendment for .87 acres from high-density residential to professional office and rezone approximately 2.08 acres from R18A, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot lots, to zone, Zone 2, R38SHO, single-family, multifamily, eight units per acre, maximum density, senior housing overlay zone, and rezone .87 acres from R18A, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot lots, zone to PO, professional office, for property located at 7378 and 7410 South Redwood Road. Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon, applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to turn the time over to Larry Gardner, our city planner, for an explanation of that long intro.
So, thank you, Mayor and counsel. The applicant is, let me get to the map. This is an area all over. So, want to describe where it's at. The Catholic Church is on the east side of Redwood Road. This would be the, well, the West Jordan Middle School was left of it, and then the elementary school. So the applicant is interested in purchasing these parcel property. They're owned by the Gilberts, who have owned them for many, many decades. They would like to sell them, and what Mr. Cannon is proposing, as the mayor said, would like to change the zoning on this piece of property that's on the north side of Drake Lane. It's bordered by an apartment complex, and then the Drake Farm, the school, and then Redwood Road out here, and a couple of single-family homes on Redwood Road. Wants to change the zoning to an R3, senior housing overlay, to facilitate the construction of 14 single-family homes for people 55 years and older, and then change the land use map on this parcel property and rezone that to professional office. The applicant already has a tenant in mind, or a person that wants to build an office at this location, and that really is the gist of his request, the land use and zoning map to facilitate this senior subdivision and the construction of an office at this location. Of course, there'll be a subdivision process that we'll go through with the planning commission if this approved. Drake Lane will be fully constructed to city standards, and the office will have access off of Drake Lane and not necessarily off of Redwood Road. Do you have any questions for me? The planning commission, in unanimous vote, recommended approval of this application.
Questions for Larry? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. So on, my question's on the length of these roads going up into the development.
Yes.
I assume they're short enough to where we don't meet the requirement for the turnaround for fire apparatus?
Yeah, and that really will be an item that will be taken care of and planned, and it'll, any fire access road will have to meet our requirements of the subdivision process. This is a conceptual drawing of what he wants to do at this time, so it'll have to meet all fire codes.
And then question number two is, well, more clarification. We're not, the rezone doesn't necessarily tie to the conceptual plan. The conceptual is just for us to kind of visualize it.
Yeah, and our ordinance now requires a concept plan with every rezone, so...
The one other thought I would throw out with the concept plan is I'd be a little bit concerned with that entrance, or into the development on the far left, where it looks like we're only doing a partial width road or entry. Not a fan of those. We've seen a lot of frustration and headaches where they may never come in, so I'd rather we just do it right the first time. But again, that being concept and...
You mean, you mean this driveway?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, and that was one of the concerns of the planning commission, and so they will absolutely see it again, and so...
Perfect. But again, that just being concept, that won't impact the vote, so thank you very much. I think that covers my questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, because, precisely because the concept plan is not binding in this type of a rezone, why the R3 zone? Why the multifamily zone when we're building single-family lots?
Because in an R3 zone, that allows single-family lots to be 4,000 square feet. He did not want to do a planned residential development. He wasn't a fan of that, and so this is the other zoning that allows 4,000 square foot lots.
Okay. I just get a little bit nervous when we rezone something without a binding concept plan that allows for something that is completely different than what the concept plan shows. This could go into a multifamily according to the zone.
But it could also languish under our cap and grade for 30, 35 years before anything could even be approved, and so, because...
Say that again?
Well, under our cap and current cap and grade ordinance, we're probably not, probably about 25 to 30 years out before we can approve any multifamily under this type of zone.
Senior housing, however, is exempt from the cap and grade.
But I think that the applicant, he's here, you can talk to him. He's a credible person, a developer, and I understand, I understand you...
I don't doubt the credibility of the applicant, and I want to make that clear, but the applicant may run out of money and sell the property, and under the current zoning, the new owner could come in and...
And you're absolutely right.
Develop this some other way, so...
You're right.
I would much rather see this come up as a planned residential development exactly for that reason, so that the concept plan is binding. Yeah, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. We'll now open the public hearing for item 7A. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item now would be the opportunity. Please.
Alexandra Eframo, 3735 Judd Circle. I am really confused. I mean, I've been proponent of not, I mean, a high-density, multi-density. Now, this particular area that we're talking about, okay, we've already, we're going to go from high-density to professional office. So if we're going to have professional offices, it's going to be a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic there. Then we're going to say we want to go ahead and rezone two acres from single family over to multifamily. Okay, that's going to be traffic. I am against that particular one. I want to, I am suggesting we keep the single-family residential. We're going to have traffic there over and over again, plus if we're going, they're trying to get a senior. Seniors walk very slow, and I'm against, I'm against the change to R38. And then here we go again. We're going to rezone a single-family residential, 8,000, again, to professional office. Professional office, you know yourself, professional office is a lot more traffic with professional office than there is with single-family residential. So I'm against, I'm not against the other two. I am against the, the one portion there, the rezone from, I want to keep, I'm suggesting keeping the 2.08 acres in the single-family residential, 8,000 square lot. You need to breathe her in there. You don't need to compact more people in that particular area. So, anyway, I'm repeating myself. I'm against the rezone of 2.08 acres from R-1-8A, single-family residential zone, to R-3-8, multifamily residential. I'm against that particular portion. I'm not against the other two, but I am against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South. I can understand what Councilman Jacob, his concerns, and while I have those same concerns, but I really do like these kind of developments, and if the builder is really going to truly do something like this, I've got one that's very close to my house, and I can tell you, it's got, I think you've got a lot more units in there than what's being shown up here, and they really are good neighbors. It's very good-looking, it's very, this kind of senior development, to me, is what our city needs to attract, rather than the, you know, four or five stories up type thing. These things typically just, they're there for the people. They're empty nesters, and they don't want to mow lawns, and they're pretty, they're just dang good neighbors. I mean, I just, so, I'm just saying, I like it, if that's what he's truly going to build there. Thanks.
Good evening, honorable mayor, distinguished counsel. I didn't know if, would it address the applicant or is the public, so here I am. I must say, I'm a little bit nervous and intimidated standing before you this evening.
Sir, would you please state your name and address for the record?
I sure will. Thank you. My name's Gary Cannon. My address is, my home address is 1397 West, 13400 South in Riverton, Utah. My business address is 9089 South 1300 West in West Jordan. I appreciate the comments that have been made by, both positive and negative, by the neighbors. I think a few things I'd like to share with you. This is about commencement of about seven months of meetings, and I have to give a lot of credit to both Loretta and Larry on your administration. They are, they've been very good to work with. They, we've worked with them hand in hand to get it to this point. My grandparents moved to West Jordan almost 100 years ago, in the early 30s. They lived on about 91st South and 1300 West. I'm a 19-year business owner in the city of West Jordan. I'm very proud of that. The two properties that we are asking for your consideration on this evening are both owned by people who've owned the properties for over 40 years. Some numbers I'd like to give you as we move through this process. There are 65, there are 10,000 people turning 65 in the United States a day right now. 10,000. This particular product that I'm bringing, presenting to you this evening is going to meet the needs of those people, probably as good or better than what I have seen. I'm not asking at this time for a attached product. These are single-family homes. Another survey study was just done with the empty nester community and the buyer, and they are making 81% of their buying decision based on the fact if they can have a pet and a yard. All of these units are equipped. The footprints that we've made here, I've got some illustrations I'd like to share with you, and if I can make this thing work. There's an example of the floor plans. They aren't cheap houses. These are probably going to end up somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000. This is definitely not a low-income product. I would be very happy with any stipulations you guys would like to put on this project to make sure that it did get done right and meet the standards that you guys set forth. I have met with the residents, the neighbors, both the Parkers are here this evening and the Piersons. We are going to be taking a 19-foot dirt road and bringing it up to city standards. We are going to be eliminating one access off of Redwood Road and channeling it all onto one road. As far as future development of the Drake family goat farm, it has been there, I don't know how many years. It's a centennial farm, I believe. This will enhance the ability for their current customer base to access their property. It will not inhibit that. that whatsoever. There are also two accesses on the Drake property through the existing subdivisions that can or cannot be filtered through on this street. And I'm not saying that the Drakes are going to sell right now in any way, shape, or form, but in the future, as their property does come up for development, there are two access roads. So this builder in the street onto Redwood may or may not be a factor for access for the Drake family farm if and when it's sold, which may be 100 years from now. We also will be stubbing all improvements onto the Drake property for they, they will be able to hook onto, they're on septic paint now, they will be able to have access to the sewer at that time if they desire to do so. I would love any questions that you would like to give me. Thank you. Lights on.
Thank you. Looks like you're good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing items, the public hearing for item 7A. Return to the council. Councilmember McConaughey.
You know, I'm actually ready to make a motion, but if there's a couple other comments, I can hold off.
You have the floor.
Okay. I just wanted to echo real quick what Mr. Jones said. I know the property that he's talking about, right in between 22 and, or excuse me, right between 27 and 32, just north of 70 South. That is a fantastic neighborhood. That is a, I would happily welcome them as neighbors. In fact, this one will be a very close neighbor to me. I would be surprised if the sell price was actually as low as what was suggested. The, we actually looked in for some of my family at other senior housing developments, and we were seeing everything was pretty much 30 to 40% higher than what had been proposed, and that was about two years ago. It's a product that our city needs. It's something that we've missed for quite some time. So having already said too much, I will cut to the chase. And based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the City Council adopt ordinance 17-dash, what's the number on this one?
47.
47.
Councilmember Burton?
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that I've had people come to me and ask for housing just like this in West Jordan somewhere, so I'm pleased to see that something like this is coming. They want a single-layer, no basement, small lot, good location. There is a demand for that, so I don't think there'll be any problem moving on this and filling that. And then I'm pleased to hear they already have somebody for the office buildings, and I think that's a great location for that office building as well, and these houses set back in just slightly off of Redwood Road, so I'm totally in favor of this whole process procedure.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. My question now would be for staff, and it's really coming after what Councilmember Jacob brought, whether it's Larry or Scott that wants to answer this, but it has to do with, if we approve the zoning to R38 with the senior housing overlay, and worst-case scenario happens, as was suggested, if we went down this road, a developer decides to, eh, let's not do that. I own the property now, I'm just going to sell it to the next guy. Well, now we have R38 with the senior housing overlay. The question I have is, is the senior housing overlay, once we do that, is it, are we mandating that it has to be that? They would have to come back to us to remove that? Or could they go ahead with just an R38 development that doesn't have the senior housing overlay component?
Okay, thanks. No, the senior housing overlay is an overlay on this zone. But the one thing I want to say is that zoning in a city, in the state of Utah, is always a legislative decision. The City Council can rezone any property in West Jordan anytime they want to. You don't need the consent of the property owner. However, you know, it is always best to get that consent or have applicants come forward, but in general plan process, you do that all the time. And so if you find something that is not meeting this expectation, then that would be one remedy to it, so. I don't know if that answered your question or not. Is there a gamble here, I suppose, but I don't think much, so.
It answers it, and it does it, yeah. It answered the question. Thank you. Appreciate it. And that's probably my concern. I'm always thinking of that what-if scenario, and as, I completely agree that senior housing is the development you want. It's the least impactful on the city. It's, that's what people want. I just don't like the what-if in this scenario, so I'll be voting against the motion. I think it would be a great plan. I think if we went PRD or something else that solidified it as a senior housing project only, and it was approved in that scenario, I'd be supportive, but I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what Councilmember Nichols just said at the end of there. I'll be opposed to the motion, not because I'm opposed to this development, but I'm opposed to what this zone allows. This development is not what's on the table. We're not talking subdivision. We're not talking, yeah, subdivision, or site plan, or anything like that. What we're talking is zoning, and the zone here will allow for multifamily. If we had a zoning condition that tied this concept plan, or tied this idea to the zone, that would be great. A senior housing overlay does not. It just says senior housing. It doesn't have anything to do with how many units are per acre, or how many units are attached or detached. So I'll be opposed to the motion in its current form. That said, I do like the development, and I hope we can find a way to get it done. Thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, question for Larry or and/or Scott. Is there a way to better accommodate what we've all been kind of suggesting? We like the idea of senior housing, but eliminate the what-if scenario?
So a clarification is, there is a maximum density of eight units per acre. So that is, that is a clarification on that, and so, you know, the applicant didn't apply for a PRD. It is a high-density residential land use map. You know, that's how the application was here, and so I don't know if the council can necessarily entertain changing it to a PRD at this point, and so. And I'm getting a negative nod from Mr. Bricky, and so I don't think it's going to.
So I'm reading code section 13-6H-12 in the senior housing overlay. That particular section talks about development plans and the requirement of a development plan associated with a senior housing overlay zone. And there's not a lot to go on in that particular section, but it does indicate that you have to follow the other title, 15, regards to development plans. Development plans, preliminary development plans are reviewed and approved by City Council. So I would, I would say that there is, with the approval of the zoning, the applicant actually does have another step, and I don't know if that was articulated to him, but per this section, unless there's some other section of code, he would still need to come back to the City Council, as far as we're talking about process, with the development plan that essentially shows what's on the screen today. He would also include some of those other elements that he's already shown you. He's most of the way there, but the senior housing overlay per code is required to get a development plan approval by the City Council. So hopefully, just approving the zoning is step one. Step two would be bringing the details back to the council.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, just to kind of let you know what I'm thinking, I'm trying to decide if there's a way that the motion could be amended, or maybe we table this and see, well, see if the developer's open to pursuing a PRD. The developer had already mentioned that he'd be interested in following whatever design require, or whatever requirements were set up by the City Council, so that might be a good alternate to, instead of voting on this tonight, table it, let the application be amended to come back as a PRD, and see if we can't get unanimous support for that. Perhaps give them a little bit more flexibility with the design and make sure that the council is able to encourage the development that's coordinated with the rest of the, the rest of the structures that are already there. So that, I'm still thinking through, but that gives you an idea of what I'm thinking.
David Bricky.
I have one idea that's kind of out there, but I heard it from the applicant make the following suggestion, and we did this in Summit County when it came to the development within Promontory. The applicant indicated he was okay with putting a restriction on each parcel as to the value of that home. If you did that, there would be virtually no way, if you put something of a value of $250,000, $300,000 on each unit, then you would never be able to have that kind of value for multi-housing, multi-dwellings. It's a, it's a stretch, and I couldn't do it tonight. We'd have to come back. But that is one additional way that I can put a handcuff on this project, but I, we would want to have to peel it back a little bit and add that language. And I don't know if, how genuine that interest was. I don't see. Oh.
Mayor?
If that is truly something that you're interested in, I guess that's something you discussed with Larry, but.
And so Mayor, the applicant just spoke to me, and he said he's even willing to do the zoning for a six-month, and if he doesn't get it done in that time, then you can revert the zoning back to what it is.
Is that legal, David? Six-month zone? That's kind of...
I think what you could do is just take it, well, he's not done in six months, so we're going to rezone the property to R18.
Yes, it is.
Councilmember McConaughey.
So I was going to suggest with drawing my motion, so that we could have a little bit further conversation, but if the applicant's okay with the time limit.
I'll let him speak for himself.
Would you allow, do we need to suspend the rule to allow the applicant to come back up, or?
We currently do have a motion on the floor that we'd have to, we could withdraw.
So I withdraw, withdraw my, I'll offer a substitute motion that we suspend the rules temporarily to allow the applicant to readdress us.
And the suspension of the rule is only for the purpose of this discussion of this item?
Correct.
Thank you. We need, we don't need a rule call for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We didn't have a second, first. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, you can address us now.
Thank you. All great comments. I would not be against at all a minimum price that's set. I have no control over construction costs. I'm just saying, and if somebody wants to build a house and finish, and put 100 grand in upgrades, I can't stop the ceiling on the top.
And what we did in this particular instance in Promontory was everything had to be of an appraised value greater than.
Oh, yeah, we're good there. Yeah. And I'm fine with that, and I also would entertain you giving me a six months. We're only increasing the density here by 1.7 units per acre overall. This isn't, we're not building townhomes, we're not building apartments, we're not building condos. This is still single-family homes, and, you know, hold my feet to the fire. And obviously, it's going to, we're going to weigh heavily on Scott, on Larry, and the administration there, that we all get work together and get it done. So hopefully in six months, we can. And I know, I love the fact that you guys still have another say in what's going to happen. This isn't, this isn't a rubber stamp with this zoning, and the last thing I want to do is create any animosity. I've got other projects, the one in West Jordan, of greater magnitude, and I intend to follow through with everything I brought through to you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Councilmember McConaughey.
I know you're getting sick of pointing at me. Let me, let me try, try doing this. I very much appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us and make sure that we get a product that's good for the neighborhood and the community as a whole. I would like to offer a motion that would allow up to 12 months, just in case there are unforeseen hiccups. I know as we've been bidding out some of our projects, we've run into issues with labor costs. I want to make sure there's a cushion to make sure that we get the project done right. I would be curious as to how I should word such a motion, and if legal has something that they could rattle off approving the motion, so I could just point to that and say, I make the motion that he just said. That would be ideal.
I'm sorry, because of my hearing, Melanie, did you get some of that?
Are we talking about your original motion?
Well, the original motion is gone because we approved the alternate, or the substitute motion. So this would be a new motion that would approve the ordinance, which includes the rezone, but have a condition in there that says if the project, I'm not sure if the proper terminology, if the project's not permitted, or if it hasn't broken ground, or what that measuring point would be. If that measuring point has, if that milestone has not been reached 12 months from today, the zoning would revert back to how it stands today.
Substantial, substantial effort. You want to try it, Scott? You might have a better idea of how development language is appropriate.
Typically, typically vesting, or whatever you want to, however you want to word it, is different milestones, recording the subdivision plat as a significant milestone. So if the concern from the council is multifamily or whatever, well, we've got individually-platted lots. I think that's a pretty substantial and easy to mark.
So let me take this stab at it, then. I move that we approve ordinance 17-47, including the rezone, on condition that the plat be recorded 12 months from today, so no later than August 23, 2018. And if that condition is not met, the zoning reverts to as it stands prior to today.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. I'd just like to state that I wasn't in favor of the first motion, but I will be supporting this motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Public hearing, item 7B, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 17-48 regarding a future land use map amendment for 4.72 acres from city center, neighborhood T S O D center to neighborhood commercial, and rezone .92 acres from CCF, T S O D, city center, frame transit station overlay district zone to CM, heavy commercial zone for property located at 7878 South, 1410 West, G M G two investment applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn the time back over to Larry Gardner.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As the council is probably aware, Sprinkler Supply owns a current business on this street right here, and what they're, what they have done is they've purchased three parcels from UDOT that are on 7800 South. Their desire is to build a building here and a parking lot, and then connect it to their existing yard, and so there'd be a flow-through for their, their business. The applicant has conceptually shown at a pre-application meeting, a building with a storefront, so there's an attractive front along 7800 South. Now, the, the building will not necessarily be a retail facility, but it will be used for maintenance of trucks and that type of thing, but the front of the building along 78 South will look like a storefront. Conceptually, that's what they have told staff that they're willing to do. But to accomplish that's what they have, uh, told staff that they're willing to do. But to accomplish that, right now, the, um, these three parcels are in a city center frame zone, which is, uh, and then the whole property is overlaid with the transit-oriented development, uh, land use. Um, this property is about a third of an acre, uh, or a third of a, excuse me, third of a mile, uh, from the, the transit station. And what they would like to do is change the land use map on their property to neighborhood commercial, which would support CM, and change the land use map on these three parcels, and rezonate to CM to allow expansion of their, their current business, um, here in West Jordan. Uh, and kind of a overhead of where they're at. They're, this industrial park's been in West Jordan for many decades now. This is, uh, BMC West operates a large lumberyard. They've just expanded onto this parcel. So businesses over here are expanding, and that's the desire of Sprinkler Supply to do the same thing. However, they can't expand upon those properties unless, uh, this is a zone change. Uh, right here is Sizzler. And then, of course, this is the, the property owned by Jordan School District. And as, as I said, the walking distance is about a third of a mile. And that's if you, uh, cross, uh, private property to get there. So it is, you know, pretty far from, you know, the outskirts of the, the transit-oriented development. And the applicant has made, you know, they're not shy about saying that they, they would like to purchase this also and, and have this whole, uh, corner of this, you know, 1410 West and 78 South is kind of a corporate headquarters for, uh, Sprinkler Supply. However, they haven't been able to, to purchase those because of different, you know, ownerships at this time. But this is a, a rough conceptual plan of what they want to do. Of course, you can see a building here. There will be access this way with a parking lot. So that would come, uh, like that. The planning commission, um, by unanimous approval recommends that the city council approve both the land use map and the zone change for this project. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Councilmember Burton?
I do have a question for you. That corner property, even though Sprinkler Supply does not own that, and they hope to sometime in the future, wouldn't it make sense just to include that in the change now instead of waiting to another time?
Um, I suppose you could do that, but I don't think the landowner has been notified of any, you know.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looks great, Larry. I'd just like to state that the history of this, uh, our economic development team, uh, worked long and hard with Senator Harper, uh, and, uh, UDOT to get this property, uh, acquired for, uh, Sprinkler Supply. So look forward to a positive recommendation here. I will now open the public hearing for item 7B. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for a discussion or motion. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can we back up this slide to show the current zoning? Again? Okay. I, I have a little bit of a heartburn with this, just because the city center frame zone would still be remaining on that little corner, um, which would just be weird. It'd be weird to have a city center frame and then not frame, and then, oh, and here's a little corner that's in that frame again. Um, it just looks a little bit sloppy to me. I, I'm also hesitant to take land out of the city center zone, um, pretty much anywhere. We've seen several development, uh, several developers interested in that whole corner, the whole city center kind of concept. And I think the more land that we can include in that concept, the better. So taking, taking, uh, zoning out of that city center zone, I think is, is a step in the wrong direction. I, I, I have nothing against the Sprinkler Company and the, the, you know, the type of business that we need in our city. I mean, it, it totally fits. But, uh, I would just like to keep the, the city center zone focused on the city center zone so that we can make that as attractive as possible of future development. Thanks.
Councilmember Newton?
Um, move that we approve ordinance 17, uh, 48, uh, as it has been noted here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See none. Let's vote.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Public hearing, item 7C, needs a motion to continue to a date certain in the future. Uh, we were unprepared for tonight. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. When you say, uh, to continue to a date certain, is there a particular date in mind?
I don't know how much time. Do we know how much time we need?
We'll probably need till September 27th. What's going on is, uh, this is one of those land use issues that developers are pushing cities to quantify and be able to very specifically identify as what is vesting. Um, Duncan and Rachel and I took a stab at what we thought was appropriate today. Rachel went up to the Hill and during interim, uh, called us and said, we need to talk. So, um, interims, obviously, that last one before the session starting, I think we'll have cleared up some of the issues by the 27th. So I'd hope, uh, no sooner than the 27th. Realistically, it could be the, uh, the first of October, frankly, though.
I believe we have to move that meeting to the 20th, though, because of, uh, we have public hearings that have to be scheduled by then. So I think we'd have to move it to the first meeting in October to be safe.
So just to give us a little wiggle room, I move that we, uh, continue item 7C until no later than the second meeting of October.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Mayor Rolf. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Burton?
Because this is a public hearing, it's been notified as such, do we still need to hold that portion of this?
No.
Or we'll just re, or it is a public hearing?
If it's set for a date specific, then no. Um, with it being no later than, then we would just renotice it as a public hearing. Either way, it's, that makes sense.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
This is item 8A.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize for interrupting. It was noticed for a public hearing. I would be curious to find out if any of our citizens are here to have, to talk about that vesting issue, because I, I don't want to preclude them from getting a chance to say something if they're here specifically for that.
Is there anyone in the audience that was prepared to speak during public hearing on item 7C?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. This is item 8A, discussion of possible action regarding the leakage study conducted by Lewis, Young, and Burningham. David Oka.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, with the, uh, focus on economic development, uh, staff is in the process of updating the strategic plan. Uh, the first step in this was to, uh, help identify some of the issues that we're facing here in West Jordan. And so with that, we've engaged, um, Lewis, Young, Robinson, and Burningham to, uh, confirm, I think, what many of us already knew. Uh, some, uh, major retailers have left, and Amazon's changed the face of retail, not only in West Jordan, but across the nation. So we're experiencing, experiencing a lot of that. Uh, so, um, here to present their findings and answer any questions are Laura Lewis and Teresa Pinkel. So I will turn the time over to them.
Thank you for inviting us this evening. We've been told that we, uh, ought to get through this pretty quick, and it's probably because we're telling you what you already know. Um, we're verifying that. I am a fast talker, uh, so if I talk too fast, and I've asked Teresa to do the same thing with, uh, hers, her part is probably more important. Um, we were asked to speak to the end about, you know, some, uh, projects in other cities where they have used, uh, various economic development tools to, you know, get things up and out of the ground. And I could probably talk ad nauseam about, uh, most of those projects in detail. I won't do that unless you ask me questions. I'll just cover the very high level. So, uh, we've been working on this to, uh, give you a sense of the community profile. Uh, we'll go through, uh, analysis of the sales tax leakage. And I think it's important to understand, um, what sales tax leakage is and isn't, and what you can do with that knowledge. Um, when we look at sales tax leakage, we're looking at, um, an average, we, we give from the state, the NCIS code, which break down everything from, you know, sewing goods to craft to, you know, hardware. And we look at what the average person spends in each of those categories. And we look at what, um, uh, kind of sales tax revenues you're getting in West Jordan in each of those categories to see where, um, you know, if the average person is, you know, buying X amount of hardware every, um, year, and you're not selling that much hardware for your population, they may be going somewhere else to do that shopping. Uh, it also doesn't mean that just because we've identified it or your economic development department's identified it, they can't just wave their magic wand and call up XYZ hardware department and have them come charging in. Oh, oh gosh, we didn't know that, right? There are a lot of factors that those entities look at when, when they decide where to locate, um, their facilities. So, um, you know, this is probably the beginning in a multi-step process to get, uh, you and your citizens to think more broadly about economic development. Uh, it's not all about sales tax anymore, because as is mentioned, um, Amazon's, uh, changing that face a lot. I heard on the way out here on NPR, um, the whole story about, you know, Walmart trying to hook up with Google and whatever, and that Amazon currently, um, has 41% of the market share of online sales, which is humongous. So they're not going away anytime soon. Um, we'll, uh, talk about what your buying power is in West Jordan compared to some of your other, uh, cities in the county. And then we'll, uh, get on to, I'll finish up with economic development recommendations. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Teresa.
Just quickly, we wanted to review your community profile, the things that you're familiar with. Um, as we look at West Jordan, the household size, um, large count is 3.46. You're looking at about a median age of 30.3, which is younger, um, in, within the county. A median income of about 68,000, um, population of 113,000. It's your fourth largest city in the state, and, uh, a population trend increasing. Um, you'll notice on the comparisons, the population growth is somewhat smaller than your neighbor, South Jordan, is dominating that with 5.06%. Um, also some high population growth within Draper and Midvale. Um, but the average annual growth rate for West Jordan is 1.49%. And if we, um, experience that same growth moving forward, we expect the population to grow to about 131,000 by 2026. So, um, good growth and good opportunities. Um, in terms of building, there's been a 7% increase in building permits. I know this chart is quite busy, uh, but the red line, third one down, tracks West Jordan, um, seeing some positive growth behind Sandy and South Jordan. Um, as we look at a comparison of city jobs available within the number of households within each community, um, West Jordan is sitting at about a ratio of one. Um, when we see that ratio go up, that suggests that there are more jobs within a community than individuals where it's lower, than people are having to leave their own community for a job. Um, so West Jordan's sitting kind of right on the cusp of that. Um, in terms of jobs classification within the city, um, trade and transportation and utilities is the primary driver, um, followed by government and education and health services with a strong representation from construction and manufacturing. Um, and just as a comparison, when we look at average wages within the comparison cities within the county, West Jordan's average wage is the fourth lowest in the county, um, at 29, almost 3,000 a month. Um, again, comparing to South Jordan, they're at about 4,200. And so as Laura mentioned, there are several factors that play into, um, economic development, and these types of community factors are, are some of those. Just high-level overview of the...
Could I ask you a question? Have you just backed on that, that, uh, is the reason that we're the lowest in the county is because of all the 68 housing and low-income housing that we have within the borders? Is that what you would attribute us being the lowest average wage in the, in the county?
I think it could certainly contribute to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, it just, as was mentioned, there was a, the last retail study that was done was concluded in 2013, based on 2011 data. Um, since then, we have seen a decline in the capture rate of sales tax. That's gone from 88% down to 77%. We'll talk a little bit about some of the general factors that contribute to that. Um, just wanted to highlight the categories that are capturing over 100%, so suggesting that residents are making purchases within West Jordan, uh, as well as other entities and individuals coming into West Jordan to make particular purchases. Um, those include the electronics and appliance category, building materials and garden supplies, food and beverage and miscellaneous trade. So those are the things that, um, are really vibrant within the economy of West Jordan. I'm just looking at a breakdown of the detail. Um, there have been slight decreases from the 2011 data to 2016, um, even within these categories that are above 100%. Um, you'll see with the electronic appliance stores, and you'll see how they compare, Murray and Midvale and Sandy are taking a, a big share of those, um, which is not a, a huge surprise. When we look at building materials, garden equipment, West Jordan definitely has a, a large stake in the game there, um, with a primary competitor of Murray. As we look at food, beverage, uh, there is, again, a decline, or this is actually one where we've seen an increase. Um, so the city is capturing more than the average sales of the city. Um, and that's been an increase from the 2013 study. Um, and then the last miscellaneous trade, um, we've also seen an increase from the 2011 study from 93% up to 108%. Um, so these factors are, are positive and things to take note of, um, the good things that are going on in West Jordan. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Um, as Dave mentioned, um, you're, you're aware of some of the businesses that have left the community that affect, um, your sales tax base. Furniture and home furnishings categories decreased from 170% down to 37%. And a lot of that is likely due to the, um, exit of RC Willie, um, and a lot of the concentration down...
We have one more question for you. Apologize.
No problem.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Just a quick question. A couple of years ago, we had another retail leakage study done that really highlighted the, uh, the sales tax revenue that was being lost due to auto, uh, purchase of autos. Is that covered in this report?
It is. So it's in our summary data on my next slide, so I can just jump there real quick. So as we look at the, the total, um, the very first line, I apologize, it's a little small border vehicle, parts and dealers. Um, in the 2011 study, or 2013 study, utilizing that 2011 data, you'll see that they were capturing 13%. That's declined slightly from 12%. Um, I know the city has been anxious and interested in bringing in an auto dealership, um, to increase that sales tax base, and that has not changed since that previous study. And so that's where the numbers stand. So, um, quickly, um, just wanted to highlight a couple of the, the changes, as I mentioned, um, with the loss of the RC Willie outlet. You've seen a, a significant decrease in home furnishings. Sporting goods, hobbies, music, and bookstores has also declined from 61% down to 42%. Um, with the closure of the Sports Authority at Jordan Landing, that's contributing to some of these decreases. Um, as I mentioned, one thing to keep in mind as we look at this, it's not, um, 100% indicative of just businesses leaving, but looking at how growth trends are happening across the state. So where you... So where Utah population's average annual growth rate has been 1.59%, it's pretty similar to the 1.49% for West Jordan. Conversely, the taxable sales within the state of Utah have increased at a rate of 6.4%, where West Jordan's lagged behind at 3.7%. So you're going to see a general decrease based on the average calculation used in this analysis. So that accounts for some of the variability, just because of the slow growth in taxable sales in West Jordan. And again, just for your consideration, this table highlights all of the different retail categories. And the next slide goes through four of the service categories that were considered in this analysis, showing the capture rates in 2016. We've highlighted in red the categories that have seen significant decreases, and the yellow highlights indicate those sections that are capturing over 100%, where they're really helping sustain the taxable base. Any questions before I move off of this slide on particular categories?
It just, it appears to me that sporting goods, where we're the youngest on the slides that you presented, our population is the youngest. Sporting goods is one area that we really have seen a downturn, and that's something that we probably ought to, in your opinion, look at trying to attract to our, since we're a younger demographic, and we definitely could use some improvement there. Is that one of the areas that you're recommending we concentrate on?
Absolutely. I think that would be a very good place to put some effort into. I know in addition, where you see, it is a little interesting, you've got a really strong prominence in the electronics and appliances. And that, I think, is also indicative of your younger population, and that's something that could be a great outlet and resource to look at capturing some of those additional sales. And just quickly, the services side, there has been a decline in most of the services, including arts and entertainment accommodation, which we hope to see that go up with the completion of the two new hotels. This particular data doesn't capture the most recent additions to your city, but those will have a positive impact moving forward. As Laura mentioned also, we just wanted to highlight the role of internet sales. The governor's office of economic, the governor's office has indicated they anticipate probably $200 million in lost revenue through internet sales. And as Laura mentioned, we're looking at in the 40% range, that's really being captured by Amazon. So where they're beginning to collect sales tax, that will change things a little bit, but there's still a lot of different online sales outlets that are contributing to that.
We have one more question for you. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. And this was right on cue. I was waiting for Amazon to pop up. So rather than we'll begin collecting, they are, I can affirm, I'm an Amazon shopper. They're collecting them for the state of Utah. So the question I have is, do you know at this state level, is the sales tax being collected and being distributed in the general pool? Or is the state of Utah getting to the level and saying that West Jordan is the point of sale because I live here, therefore, West Jordan's getting their full half a percent of sales tax?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure at this point. We can follow up with that.
I would very much appreciate that. That would be very helpful. Because legislatively, I think the legislature may have made a mistake if they didn't do it that way.
I'm not even 100% certain what level of sales tax they're collecting. There was a deal that they negotiated with Amazon, and they've been pretty tight-lipped about that. So we will ask and see what we can find out and report back to you what we find out. It's a very good question.
Thank you very much.
And we just wanted to briefly touch on buying power. As we look at the positive growth projections for the city, and we look at almost 7,000 new residents that we project through 2020. With that, the average spending per capita for current residents for retail and services is 9,000. If you look at that and look at the spread annually, we're looking at about $15.8 million in potential buying power yearly from that period of 2016 to 2020. So it's a good potential when looking at the per capita income for West Jordan, though we do lag behind at Murray, South Jordan, Sandy, Draper. So that will have an impact on whether or not additional sales are captured at that As a final aspect of this particular analysis, we were asked to look at some opportunities to, again, as Dave mentioned, update the strategic economic development plan and utilize the data that we've seen here in the sales leakage study. And one of the first recommendations we have for that is the completion of a slot analysis, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that exist within West Jordan, things that are unique to this city, to its infrastructure and opportunities that we can really capitalize on economic development, going through a formal exercise to identify those things, get stakeholders involved, so that everybody's bought into the strategic economic development plan moving forward. In addition, we would propose holding an economic development workshop to help educate both the council and residents about the process of economic development. You've got an incredible team, a lot of great resources at your disposal, and we feel like bringing everyone together and identifying what tools specifically you want to utilize is going to be really valuable as you move forward with the growth coming. In addition, we had an opportunity to review your strategic economic development plan that was put together in 2012, and we just had a couple of recommendations as we go through this process, including focusing and reviewing on the current focus areas. There's eight right now, and we want to make sure that everyone is bought into that plan. Also looking to prioritize and identify long and short-term goals, so it's not just a bunch of bullet points, but something that you can focus on individually. In addition to that, there's some great work being done in collaboration with the council, with a consulting firm to look at being strategic in the way that economic development goes forward and making sure that the buy-in is really strong for that. So I'll turn a few minutes over back to Laura to discuss just high-level, some of the core elements of economic development and how they play into this plan that we're recommending for you to move forward.
How are you doing on time?
You're just fine. Go ahead.
So one of the things that I would advise you to all consider, because you're the ones that are in the seats that helps set the policy, is it is difficult, if not impossible, for your staff to carry out any type of economic development plan if they don't have a majority of support from all of you as to how and what tools they can use and how they can use them. I met with another city, someone in the room might remember several years ago, and there was someone on the council, we were talking about economic development, someone on the council said, "Well, I'm just opposed to incentives." And I said, "That's fine. If you're opposed to incentives, that's great. Let your economic development people know, but don't expect them to be able to do a lot because everyone around you..." I mean, don't tell me you're opposed to incentives, but then why is West Valley doing ABC and we're not getting it here in this neighboring city? It's because they're offering incentives and you're not. So please recognize that the policies that you set as we go through this process and help make you and your citizens aware of what tools are available, doesn't mean you have to use all of them, but once you decide this is available, it will make their job much easier so that they know what they have to work with. So the core activities of economic development are retention. You want to retain the existing businesses that you have and to help them grow. There are even tools available today, fairly new tools, that some cities are starting to employ to help retain their businesses by letting them know that they're paying attention to them. And also in addition to this meeting with your key businesses and making sure that they know a face in the city they can call, there are things, one of the new things is called the CPAS bond. Commercial, I'm having a brain pattern. Public, oh, C, the energy clean, okay, I should know. Public, tell me.
It's commercial property assessed clean energy.
Commercial property assessed clean energy. So the nice thing is that it allows your businesses, any commercial entity can come to you, approach you, and all you are is a conduit. The law specifically states that you have no obligation and you cannot make payments on these assessment bonds. But in order to access the market, they have to come through you as a conduit, but probably most of your businesses don't even know this program exists. It allows them to finance over a 30-year period any energy improvements that they're making. Include HVAC, better windows, et cetera, et cetera. Well, it's good for them because they're reducing their energy costs. Good for you because we're out there helping you, and it doesn't cost you anything besides some time and energy, which is, I'm not saying that's nothing, but it doesn't put the city on the hook for anything. So retention is an important thing. Similarly, helping those businesses expand. So I'm working with Orem City right now, and we just completed 10-8-2 analysis for them because they have car dealerships. I don't know which one of you asked about car dealerships. They have car dealerships that are aging. And if you, I happen to live in Murray, and you know, you know what happens in Murray. It's like one car dealer did the new best, woo-hoo, right? And all of them have to follow suit, or else it's, they've got to leave and go somewhere else so they can keep up with the Joneses. So Orem had some key car dealerships along a key corridor. They wanted them to stay, they wanted them to expand, but what did it require? It required some cash from the city. So we did an analysis and said, "If you spend X, here's what you can expect to receive in return." So it's very important that you help with those expansion efforts. Recruitment, that's a very important thing. You've got to go out and find those businesses. And again, it is much more than just saying, "We've got land and we're great, please come here and build your business." And then redevelopment, taking properties that have been here a while, maybe look a little bit worn down, and figuring out how to better those areas, which kind of gets you back into, then you retain them. With that, I have again a host of examples. We work with a lot of cities throughout the state, and we have helped West Valley with their city center RDA. It's been going on for, I don't know, probably the better part of 15 years. I know the first piece of that financing we did was the year of the economic downturn. We did a large financing for them to assist with mall renovations. We helped with Midvale's Bingham Junction project using RDA and tax increment on that property. It had to be shovel-ready once they got it cleaned up and EPA gave them the green light to proceed. Well, now you've got a big fat brown field that has no roads, no water, no sewer. So we were able to help to make that shovel-ready because that's very important to that recruitment element. And then in South Jordan, we assisted them. Again, this is, you might not be thinking of this in terms of economic development in a way because it's residential development, but what drives economic development? Those rooftops, right? And Daybreak basically said to the city, "We're going to come, here's our plan, this is when we'll build. But golly gee, if you could help us get this infrastructure in sooner, we can build more faster." The demand is there in Utah, and so the city stepped up and did that through an assessment bond, which again, the burden of that assessment bond goes back on the developer, notwithstanding the city could be at risk if the assessment's not paid in that instance. Okay, there's my quick spiel with some examples of economic development. Any questions?
I do have a question, Laura. On retention, back to that. The program you mentioned, I'm really interested in. I learned last night that again, we've lost a very large retailer in Jordan Landing to a city to our north, a neighboring city to our north. So I'm really interested in you helping our economic development team in that area. So any suggestions other than what you've already described, we're open to.
Okay, well, that's great. And I think as we go through the process, again, I do think it's important that you, again, not just you up there on the dais, but your constituents need to understand the tools that are available to you are available to everyone else. And if you're only using a hammer and everyone else has a whole toolbox, you're not going to retain as many businesses. So I think as we go through that process to help educate you, and you can help us educate your constituents so that you know what tools you have to use. It doesn't mean that just because you have the whole toolbox, businesses are going to come flooding, but we need to address hard topics like density. People say density and what, your room fills up behind me, right? Ah, we don't want density because density is evil. All density isn't evil. And those are kind of topics that have to be addressed in a fair and reasonable manner. But I think as we go through this process, I think a lot of great ideas will come out and we'll brainstorm and figure out how to put those ideas to action.
Thank you. You did a great job, and we really appreciate the information. We're going to, our economic development team's going to put it to good use.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
For support of the council, thank you. The last item on our agenda has been removed. Remarks. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let you know I will likely not be in attendance at our August 29th meeting. This is the special Tuesday one next week when we canvass the election. If needed, I understand there might be others who may not be able to participate. I could participate electronically. My little boy's having, my two-year-old's having his tonsils out, so I'll be sitting up at Primary Children's for the night. And then October 11th, I will likely be in transit. I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it before the meeting, but I would say do not plan on the evening of October 11th. So just wanted to make you aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Two things. First thing was my attendance as well. It is unlikely I will be here next week. I chose to be here tonight instead of next week. And I could participate electronically should it be required. So I guess we could gauge from the council if we think there's anything that needs to be there, and I'd be happy to participate. And then additionally, the first one in September, the 13th, my wife and I will be vacationing that night, but I am happy to participate electronically if that would be the council's bidding. I'd be happy to do that. I fully anticipate that there might be some kind of discussion about that, but I'd be happy to, I'm happy to be here for that one. I just physically won't be here. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the item that was removed. I'd really like an update on where we're at. If staff has any information on the arts facility, I would really appreciate that.
Councilmember McConaughey. Thank you, Mayor. The quick update on the arts facility is the architect has shared their drawings with the general contractor, contract management firm. I think I got that out right. And they're going back to review some budgetary concerns. So we're hoping to have a good update for them in the next two weeks. There were some, if you went through the staff report when it was on there earlier, there were some contradictions. So we had asked them to clarify those before bringing it up to the council. So that's why it was pulled. I can share more offline, but that's a short answer.
I will be putting two items on the next, the first agenda on the 13th of September. One will be to revisit the sewer fees charged to our residents, the automatic increase that came about from actions a year ago, and also be discussing the inaccuracy in the water bill that occurred this last month. So if you can make that happen, Melanie, I appreciate it. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Can I ask a question?
That would be appropriate.
I know I don't get to speak very often, but with our meeting schedules, speaking while we're all talking about schedules, with the two propositions that will be on the ballot in November, there is a requirement by state law for us to conduct two public hearings for both of them. The public hearings for the form of government will be scheduled on the 13th and the 20th. So we must have a meeting on the 20th of September. The first one for the general bond will be on the 13th. So on the 13th of September, we'll have the general bond obligation for the rec center along with the form of government change. Those two public hearings will be held on those nights. Then the form of government, because they have to be two meetings in a row, the 20th, and then the other one doesn't really, it's in October, the last meeting in October. So I guess my question also is, are we wanting to have a meeting the 13th, 20th and 27th? I don't, because we have the meeting next week also on Tuesday, the 29th. We could just start having them every Wednesday if you guys want.
I say we can leave it as per the typical two times a month unless we set a special meeting like the one that was set on the 29th prior.
Okay. And the other quick question, and this is, I don't know, maybe... And the other quick question, and this is, I don't know, maybe David can pipe in. We are coming to the deadline of when we need to get sponsors or individuals to provide for and against statements for both of the propositions. We're getting really close. The deadline is September 8th of when the 500-word statements need to be submitted to me.
What happens legally if one side has the?
The response will be prepared. Lieutenant Governor's Office will prepare the voter information pamphlet.
No.
Is that the question?
I do it.
Well, it's sent to them for final publication, but it is, it will have nothing in there if you don't have some response. That's my point. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Brans will prepare it, but if somebody by September 8, there isn't a positive and a negative, for and against prepared, then it will be simply, it'll read nothing was prepared or presented. There are some deadlines that are coming up pretty quick, not only that one, but the, Sherry Swenson's office contacted us today and said, when the resolution was presented, it did not identify what your title would be and what the number. So we're working between now and September 1st to identify the title. And one title suggestion was mayor slash council form of government.
Okay. Well, I don't, I'm, so I can see you. The general bond obligation for the 46 million, our bond council has already sent the resolution to the lieutenant governor who signs the number. That number is already proposition one.
So this will probably be?
Proposition two.
Mayor slash council form of government resolution, or?
Proposition number two.
Proposition two. So on the other hand, if, those of you who voted to identify that as being appropriate for the ballot, if you want to tell me what the title will be, and we can share that with the, Ms. Swenson, I need it by September 1st.
Councilmember Jacob.
I just had a question that wasn't an answer to your question, so if somebody has an answer to that question first, you can go first, seeing none.
No, I was just going to say if, if the code says council manager, then I think that's what the title ought to be. I don't think we come up with a different title. I think it's whatever's in, in code. If it's council mayor, then that's what the title should be.
That's what we, the goal was to in fact reflect strictly what the legislature identified it, but as an advocate for one position or another, you always want to present your best argument in that title. So I'm giving you that opportunity if you want to make that, that argument for it. That's your right.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. So that goes to my question, is who can write these? Can, can we? I mean, we got a very strict thing about not campaigning for or against and stuff like that. Can we write these statements?
You can if you're a part of the committee of five that's selected.
There's a committee of five that will be selected, that has been or will be?
They haven't been selected yet, but we've already started receiving resumes and peoples indicating their interest. I have at least knowledge of two.
Do you? Because I have one that I have knowledge of.
So we just need verification of who's interested, and then that assignment, once the committee of five is in for or against, internally you decide who writes it, or how you write it as a group, however that signature. I've seen them come in with all five names on them.
Right.
I've seen them also come in with a single name.
Right.
And then I remember seeing these in the past. Do they usually have an argument for and an argument against, and then a rebuttal to the argument for and a rebuttal to the argument against, right?
For and against statements are 500 words exactly, and the rebuttals are 250 words exactly. Well, or less.
So, so when the statements for and against are submitted, does then those committees have an?
Yes, I'm looking at the deadline.
Another window?
Do you want me to read the deadline to you?
That would be wonderful.
I work, my department worked with Duncan Murray, Deputy City Attorney, to kind of, and then I also sent it to the bond council for them to review it also. We need the submission of requests for them, the citizens, by Friday, September 1st. We need the deadline to publish, that's my public hearing noticing, that doesn't matter for you. Submission of arguments for and against is Friday, September 8th. Then I'm required to email the statements for the arguments to the opposing sides on Monday, September 11th. The first of two public hearings will be September 13th and 20th, and then Friday, September 22nd, the submission of the rebuttals is due to me. Then in October, I have to put all the voter information pamphlet together, and I have to have it mailed between October 2nd and no later than October 16th, which is why, because the state law requires it to be mailed to the voters within enough time to really research it.
Can you email that timeline to the whole council?
Yes, I will.
And not only do we need the submission of names for the form of government, but also?
Right.
The $46 million bond.
We need 10 people or?
So?
They could be duplicate, they could be duplicate.
If only one signs up, they can represent the side. Or zero.
Right.
There's no side.
But there's two committees, there's a committee of five pro and a committee of five against?
Correct.
So there's 10, so there's, could be 20 people.
20. If they're different people for the bond and then different people for the form of government, correct?
Excellent. Thank you.
And I think I'll just make one more statement, and David, our interim city manager, city attorney, can just clarify, just kind of to clarify Councilmember Jacob's comment, that if a council member wants to be part of either side, they would state as a citizen, correct? They would want to state as a citizen that they're representing themselves.
Absolutely correct. Your, your participation is not officially one of the council.
Okay.
A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Send the second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Let's vote. There's that. It's all in favor.
Yep.
We're adjourned.